I'm going to call this meeting to order. All right, folks, welcome. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Can we start with a motion to approve the minutes from the March 2nd meeting? Motion by Ms. Stoll, seconded by Mr. Casa. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Good evening, Mr. Patchell. How are you, sir?
Thank you for my break.
You're welcome. In order to meet, it seemed like the right time to do it, as I'm about to jump into public comment here. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania sunshine law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens a logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the committee chair may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. If anybody at this time would like to present to the committee, please so do so.
I would conform to your request that I sign my name and whatever, but it is not here, so I will proceed and I will sign it later.
Okay.
Are we doing, oh yes, here we go. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane. I had two children, but now I'm a poor old senior citizen fighting for those that are disadvantaged elderly, small business people, and I come here, as you know, many, many years, and I hope that I slowed the speed of the bus heading downhill. So what I want to do is, I want to make it clear that when you go with these things, I was going to read a little piece from Milton Friedman about what is the difference between infrastructure inspections and personnel expenditures? And I said, remember, that door over there never taught a child anything, okay? It was very expensive. You have to pay for it. It has a legacy cost. You need to borrow money. There's many things that you want to do, but the critical thing is, the staff is the blood that's circulating through this district, and you must be able to get transfusions and get fresh blood in here. And I said, you know, you have to really think about this, that if we're on the verge of a lot of retirements, and if this profession becomes wretched, like it was 40 or 50 years ago, I think it was pretty wretched, and then they got a lot of power, and it could be like the bell curve, so we might be headed downhill now, and I think Dr. Dietrich's mentioned that a lot of the support staff, like the bus drivers and the people that work in food service, they, I think they're going to have a really hard time. I think the whole country's going to have a hard time with 300,000 people retiring every month, and when they tout that they, "Oh, we put 270,000? Wow, you barely kept up with the retirements. That's really fantastic. You probably have them coming back on part-time." So I think you need to be well aware, and the things that we have facing us right now, as you know, I don't want to say it again, I'm so tired of hearing it. I get good news off France 24. I gave up on American news. I get to see what's going on in Europe, which is a lot more deadly, a lot more corrosive, and a lot more thoughtful than what's going on here. Our leader says, "Don't worry about it. Everything's fine." I don't feel fine at all. So that's why they're out at Costco cleaning the shelves out for rice and everything non-perishable. That's the people voting with their dollars. So, look, you have to think about, we can't handle 3.2, 3.6. To calm the public is, you know, what we have done, we have restrained our spending because, you know, we're entering uncharted waters, and the 10-year treasury is 4.17. That is not an indicator of true confidence. So I want you to be thoughtful about this. You know, we're not going to stop projects, but what you have to do is, stop, think, observe, and then proceed. Don't keep plowing on and spending money you don't have. Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Skoraki, in what order would you like to handle these items tonight?
Okay, so I think tonight, we have a presentation from two representatives from PFM. I think we'll start with that. And I do want to mention that if it seems like we've had a number of finance committee meetings lately, we have. This is the fourth finance committee meeting in the last six weeks, so we've been pretty active lately. So tonight, we'd like to talk about a possible refunding opportunity, refinancing of bond issues that were just issued in 2018 and 2019. These were for the Napp Elementary School project. So this is really indicative of how far interest rates have fallen, particularly in the past month, month and a half. So it's amazing that we've had recent bond issues that are possibly an opportunity to save the school district money with an advanced refunding of those issues. So tonight, we have with us Scott Shear from PFM and Garrett Moore from PFM to cover the advanced refunding analysis, and then also, we thought this was a good opportunity to have a little bit of a refresher on a discussion we had at the March 2019 Finance Committee meeting about a cash-settled hedge opportunity for future borrowing, that we might want to take a look at that, too, again, because interest rates have fallen so far. So with that introduction, I'll turn over to Mr. Scott Shear. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate being here. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I'll just be walking briefly through this first handout here, so we'll just sort of flip through, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions for Garrett and myself. So starting on page one, we just heard kind of a good opening on the overall market update as far as where rates are. I don't think we really need to get into that. I think everyone's very much aware of all the national and international issues that are going on that have rates very, very low. And so just as kind of a refresher, you know, we've been doing a lot of sort of capital planning and forecasting with your administration on some potential future projects, and in doing so, I guess, obviously, we're watching the market, and we're always canvassing your debt portfolio to see if there's any opportunities to refinance any of your debt, which we've come back over the years to do so. I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, we had some interactions, and we were going to be talking about some of the capital planning, and also said, okay, well, that's part of that conversation, with rates dropping so much, let's look at some refinancing opportunities. So that's what kind of brought us here this evening, to see if you do have interest, and to see if you want to move pretty quickly to potentially try to capture the market. We can't guarantee anything, but at least we want to come with the idea to see if you want to proceed. So that's sort of what got us here this evening. As far as the refunding opportunity and point number three, so there was an initiative of tax reform that was passed at the end of 2017, which basically eliminated the ability for school districts and townships and cities, so on and so forth, across the state and country, to advance refund debt on a tax-exempt basis. And so basically, what that means is, you have a call date or a prepayment date on all of your outstanding bond issues, and if you're more than 90 days away from that date, you can refund it in most cases, but that's called an advanced refunding. So before the tax law was passed at the end of 17, you could do that with tax-exempt bonds, and we did some of those for the school district. Well, once the Tax Reform Act was passed, it basically said, okay, well, now, school districts, you can still do an advanced refunding, meaning, you know, you're more than 90 days away from your prepayment date or call date, but instead of issuing tax-exempt debt, you can now do it with taxable debt. So that cut the, sort of limited the amount of debt that was being issued for refinancing purposes, just because typically, tax-exempt debt is lower than taxable debt. So a lot of issuers across the state and around the country were not doing advanced refundings, kind of period. But then, just kind of recently, with the rates, all the rates dropping so much, getting, we're getting close to zero, you know, as you heard, that the taxable rates now are extremely low as well, in some cases even lower than tax-exempt rates. All the curves and ratios are completely out of whack. And so that's where, when we were talking with your administration, that let's look at the two outstanding bond issues that might make sense, and that's the 2018 bonds and 2019 bonds. And you see in 5B and 6B, both of those have call dates out in 2024. So obviously, we're well past, you know, that 90-day, you know, we've got many years until we get to that call date. So this would be considered an advanced refunding, but we're not legally able to do it with tax-exempt bonds, so our only alternative is taxable bonds. And you see there, the average existing rate for the 18 bonds and 5C is about a 3.67% and for the 19 bonds, about a 4.2 is the existing rate on those. So when we did analysis, and we don't have a lot of detailing in here, we wanted to keep it more in summary format, but basically, point number seven, I think, is really the key. So you have an opportunity to refund both of those bonds, the 18 and the 19 bonds, and we can issue taxable debt now. And some of you may have been on the board, some may not, but in 2018, we were here, I can't remember if it was myself or one of my colleagues, to kind of do a bonds or debt financing 101 with the board at that time. And we talked about, you know, issuing bonds for some of your debt, issuing bank loans, and there's other forms of debt out there that you can issue. Typically, the school district does bond issues, and that's what brings about the lowest cost of funds. We're not wedded to whichever option you want to do. Our job is to make sure you get the lowest cost. So right now, one of the things that we'd like to consider is actually doing a bank loan, kind of canvassing some of the local and regional banks for what's more called a note as opposed to a bond. And so if we did that right now, whether it's a bond issue or a bank loan with taxable proceeds, we're looking at somewhere around $900,000 of net savings. And that's net of issuance cost, that's net of any reimbursement, which the school district gets very little reimbursement. And so from an efficiency standpoint, there, you see it's about 5% of what's being refunded. In many cases, we've been back and said, hey, if there's a refinancing we can do, we can save 2%. So in round numbers, if you're refunding 10 million of debt, 2% of that's 200,000. So here, we're, you know, 5%, so we're sort of well over the norm. And I think that's fine for this option where we're issuing taxable debt. Slightly different mechanism, financing vehicle than what you're typically used to. So you can go do it now, and again, markets change every minute, and this is what it was when we put the handout together a couple of days ago. That's changed since then. Today, rates actually went up quite a bit. Concept. Do we take what you can get right now? It's still a very efficient transaction. Say, if we set a target around a million dollars, that's a very efficient deal, maybe very worthwhile to go forward with, or do we just kind of wait? And there's obviously a lot of risks with waiting as well, and maybe try to get a larger amount of savings. Or we could get to that call date in 2024. Savings could be substantially less. We just, you know, we don't know. And so there's different things to kind of monitor, and we can get, we'll get a little bit more into that. So if we go to the next page, points nine and 10, and just real briefly, you know, as I mentioned before, there's the bank loan concept, and then there's the bond issue concept. Typically, we do a competitive internet auction for your bond issued, where we invite bond underwriters from around the nation to participate. With your very good credit rating and the structure of your transactions, we always get very good interest and very good results that we're able to bring back to you. Here, on a bank loan, we would still do that on a competitive basis. It would not be an internet auction. We basically do more of an old-fashioned RFP, a Request for Proposal, which we do a lot for our clients, and again, we'll send an RFP out to maybe a dozen or so different banks and try to get results back. So it would still be in a competitive format. And again, there's pros and cons, but given the uncertainties in these markets right now, we figured, let's try to get an RFP out, if you're so inclined, see what kind of results we get. We'll still monitor the bond issue. Doing a bond issue typically takes longer. There's more parties involved, and you've got to go through the credit rating process, and there's usually more fees involved as well. In some instances, the bank loan, you can get done quicker, less fees upfront, but sometimes that comes with a higher interest rate. So it's something we have to evaluate and then come back and present to you. So, you know, again, there's no, there's no one-size-fits-all solution for every school district or for every transaction. It really is kind of market pending, and typically, when we're looking to do financings for you, we kind of roll out, say, a bank loan right from the beginning. We looked at it, it's not producing a very efficient result, let's move to a bond issue, and we kind of do that right away. Here, it's a little bit, it's much closer right now, given the market that we're in. And also, if we're able to move a little bit quicker with a bank loan, let's try to do that. So again, no right or wrong answer. It really just comes down to what's providing the most efficient transaction for you. Real briefly, on page four, and so again, just kind of keep this image in your mind as we go to the next couple of pages, but on page, or I'm sorry, I skipped page three. Sorry about that. Let's go back to page three. So page three is a table of all the district's outstanding debt, and basically, if we go over to columns 11 and 12, where you see the red dotted line around those, and let's just stay kind of towards the top of that, where those are the 2018 and 2019 bond issues, and it shows the principal and interest that's due each fiscal year. Down below there in columns 25 and 26, that's what we call the net local offer requirements, which is after state aid, but the district's not getting state aid on those bond issues. So again, let's just kind of stay up top on 11 and 12. One of the key things to remember with this transaction, if you decide to move forward and if we get rates at work, is we're not changing the amortization of these, of this debt. We're keeping the same maturity dates, keeping the same end date. We're basically just going, hopefully, from a higher rate to a lower rate to achieve some kind of economic benefit. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not stretching the debt out or anything like that. We're keeping it the same structure as when we issued it in 2018 and 19. Because some of you may know, in personal mortgages, sometimes you may refinance a, what you have, maybe you have 20 years left on your mortgage, but you refinance it back to a 30-year loan. That's not what we're doing here. We're keeping it the same duration. But those are the two bond issues that we're looking at. We did look at your other outstanding debt, and those are not producing any benefit at this time, but of course, we're going to continue to monitor. Page four, this is actually a tax-exempt index, but it goes back to 2000, to the year 2000, and this, it's a 10-year index, but again, it goes back about 20 years, where, so it's similar to the 10-year treasury that a lot of us look at as a benchmark, but this is the tax-exempt equivalent of it. But just to give you an illustration, where if you look at the yellow line down at the bottom, and you then kind of look at the yellow line and then also look at the yellow box up in the top right-hand corner, basically, we're at all-time lows, that the percent of the time greater than where it is right now, it's 100% of the time. In this duration, we have not been lower than where we are right now. If you look at the, I guess it's the reddish kind of dotted line right above there, that is where, that's just an indication of where current rates are right now, plus a half percent, or 50 basis points. And if you look in that box up there in the red, that basically shows that 97% of the time, rates have been higher than current rates plus a half percent. And then we have the other two things as well. So you'll see where this makes more sense when we get to the next two summary pages, but overall, you know, again, rates are very, very low, and we'll come back to page four here momentarily after we review these next two pages. So if we go to page five, so this is a quick scenario that we put together, where, I know there's a lot of stuff on here, but the blue over on the left-hand side, where we labeled as scenario one, that's, this is, this whole page is only related to refinancing the 2018 bonds. So we'll get to the 19 bonds on the next page. But basically, in the blue there, if we're going to issue about, you know, 10 or 11 million dollars, we're going to refund those 2018 bonds. This one here, about five lines down where it says savings, it's about a half a million dollars for this one here. And again, that's net savings, and you see down in column nine, how those savings are realized, basically, over the next three fiscal years and every year thereafter. It's about the same. So that's if you did it on a taxable basis. Whether it's a bond issue or a bank loan, it's still taxable rate, and that's what the RFP process is going to vet out. But basically, this particular one here is getting you about a half a million. Then, all the other colors next to it, the red, the green, the purple, and the orange, and the other blue, that's different interest rate scenarios, what the, kind of the market, the world may look like when we get to the call date out in 2024, and you did this as a current refunding with tax-exempt debt. So basically, if we just, let's just say, look in the green. So if we look in the green column, and we wait until this transaction becomes callable in early 2024, and rates are the same as they are right now, meaning at all-time lows in the market, your savings are going to be about 1.1 million dollars, as opposed if you did it now, it's going to be about a half a million dollars on a taxable basis. So transactions usually get more efficient, the closer you get to the call date, assuming rates don't change, which is not necessarily a realistic assumption to make. If you go to the orange, let's just jump two over, and if we get to the call date and rates are 100 basis points higher, basically, 1 full percent higher than where they are right now, savings are pretty close to where they are now, about, you know, a little over a half a million dollars. And so now, let's go, just go back to that chart, back on page four. And so when you look in the green, and when you kind of look at that green dotted line and you look at the green box, basically, 82% of the time, going back 20 years, rates are higher than where they are right now, plus 1 full percent. So, you know, no one knows where the future, you know, what the future holds. We know what happened in the past. This just kind of gives you an idea, again, puts it in perspective of how low rates really are right now. So this is the analysis that we did for the 18 bonds, you know, again, showing you can maybe do it now, and if rates stay the same, you know, rates kind of hold out for the next couple of weeks, you can maybe get a half a million dollars. If you wait for a couple of years until it becomes callable, there's a chance that you could get more savings, or there's a chance you could get less savings. It just depends on where the market is. If you jump then to page six, the analysis is going to look very similar, and this one relates to the 2019 bonds. So again, in the blue, on the far-left-hand side, assuming you do it taxable today, savings are about 430,000, give or take. So when you combine those two, like we said on the very first page, right now, the savings are around 900,000, give or take a little bit. And then, you know, again, we did the analysis that if rates are lower when you get to the call date, if they're the same, if they're 50 basis points higher, or 100 basis points higher, or 150 basis points higher, what do the numbers look like? And you can basically just see here that, you know, obviously, if rates stay, it's back in the green again, that if rates stay the same, when we get to call date and refinance the 2019 bonds, savings are going to be about a million dollars, so about double where they are right now. If rates are 150 basis points higher than where they are right now, your savings are about a quarter of a million. So it's less than where it would be. So no one in here knows really, truly where the market is going to be next week, let alone three or four years from now, but that's why we at least wanted to show you this analysis, so you could kind of get some kind of quantification of what it may mean if rates do move around, and whether you kind of take the burden in hand now, or you wait till we get to that call date. So what we could do from a timing perspective, so that kind of concludes the analysis part of things. So it's moving extremely quick, but what we could possibly do is, if you were inclined, we could get an RFP out on the street tomorrow morning to a lot of the local banks, ask for responses back, say, next Thursday, in time for your meeting next Thursday, and we could come back and present those results. And at that time, there could be a resolution for your, borrowing resolution for your consideration that basically just says, if the savings exceed, say, a million dollars, or whatever the threshold is that we all pick, that then we can execute a contract with whichever bank produces the best result, and it'd basically be whatever has the lowest interest rate out there. So we could try to move very, very quickly. Again, while we're doing that, we're also going to be looking at the bond issues and maybe starting to dust off some of that work. The good news is, there's not a lot to dust off, because we just did the transaction towards the end of last year, and so, you know, we'll kind of go down that dual-track path for a little bit, but to take advantage of this market, because who knows? I mean, there could be a lot more whipsaws every day. We figured we could at least do that for you, to bring back what the savings potentially look like. I mean, we never know. We could hit a home run with a bank loan and maybe exceed these expectations, or we may get total duds, and if we do, well, you know, at least we tried. From a fee perspective, if the transaction does not get done, you know, if we go through this process and the results come in very poorly, we don't charge for the service. We only charge if a transaction successfully gets to closing, and that's the way the other professionals work as well. So it's an option. I know it's moving quick, but this market's moving very quick as well, so in talking with your administration, it was, what can we do quickly to potentially save the district some money? And that's why we felt it was important to come this evening to share this with you.
Given the wild swings right now, well, not wild, but, you know, swings in the rates in the bond market, if you go through this process, are they going to update based on the daily conditions? Like, I mean, how does that work? Is it just a one and done?
It really depends on the bank. So if we say, okay, give us your responses back next Thursday at noon, so we can evaluate them, hop in the car, and come down here for your evening meeting, some banks are going to say, we don't care what the market does after that, we're going to hold that rate. Other banks may say, because we have some right now that we're currently talking to on some other loans, we were just talking to on the way down here, that if the market gets better, meaning rates go low, lower, after they submit a proposal, some banks are actually willing to adjust downward to your benefit. Now, we just got to make sure it's very clear that we're not going to adjust upwards if the market goes against us, that you will only see any benefit, not any dis-savings, if you will, or not a benefit if rates go the opposite way. So some will be willing to change the rate even after they submit it, some won't.
So I'm just wondering also that, I mean, there is talk that they're considering cutting again at a meeting two weeks from now, like three-quarters of a point or something. So is it prudent to have this conversation in, like, two weeks?
Well, and that's where, so a good example of that is a career and tech center financing that we did back up in the center part of the state, and there was a bank loan, and the bank submitted a proposal, and that was before the emergency Fed cut that occurred just a little bit ago. So we all know the Fed cut, 50 basis points, and so after, even after we started kind of the closing process and getting the things in motion, we went back to the bank and said, hey, rates are lower, can you adjust? And they said, yes, we can adjust. So even if you pass a resolution next Thursday, you know, obviously, we're going to keep in touch with everybody, but it would not get any worse than what we're showing you. If anything, it could potentially get better, because we want to close on the transaction. We still got to go through all the filings with the state and kind of go through that paperwork, and that takes about a month. So we would have, you know, from next Thursday, it'd be about a month until we're actually able to close. So we, depending on the bank, we may have a little bit of wiggle room to adjust the rates during that time.
And Mr. Fusco, the Federal Reserve actually meets March 17th and 18th. They typically release the results of the meeting the second day. So on the 18th, there'll be an announcement, and you are correct, I think most economists are predicting a further rate cut. Our meeting is on the 19th, and proposals will be due by noon on the 19th, so if there's any additional, yes.
Yeah. So it should all work out pretty well from a timing standpoint.
Okay. A couple of questions. Would this at all, whether it be a bank loan or a bond issuance, would that affect our rating at all, our credit rating? Were we double A?
Yeah, you're very good credit rating. No, this would not affect if we, whether we did either one, whether we did a bond issue or a bank loan. They're going to acknowledge that the district is being very prudent with its overall debt management and taking advantage of the markets and able to, you know, trying to lower the interest cost to the taxpayers here. So I'd say it'd be net neutral. So there wouldn't be any, you know, you're not going to get upgraded from it, nor will you get downgraded.
Be no negative risk?
That's right.
Okay, a couple of other questions regarding the bank loan. I see in here that it says a variable rate with a cap rate thereafter. Let's say if it's a fixed interest rate for the 5, 7, or 10, would that be part of the bank loan, that it would eventually end up being a variable rate? Or would you go in just for a fixed rate?
Well, we typically...
I'm on page two, it's 9B.
Yeah, typically, our RFPs are pretty flexible to see what's out there, so we say, if you're able to, give us a fixed rate for the full term. That's our preferred option, and I think that'd probably be your preferred option as well. So give us that proposal. Some will, some will not. Others just have lending limits where they can only offer a fixed rate for a certain time period. That might be five years, or seven, or 10 years. So if they do that, they're going to say, okay, here's our proposal for a fixed rate for five years, and then after that, the rate's going to reset based off whatever, some index. And so we're going to run the numbers, we're going to run the models, assuming, making some assumptions on what that index may be, or we're also going to run those models assuming the cap rate. By state law, anytime a school district has a variable rate loan, there has to be a cap on it. And so obviously, one of our jobs is to make sure that cap is very low to your benefit. So we're going to run multiple options for you to see that, because you may end up liking, even though we all like the idea, can probably sleep better with a fixed rate for the full term, you may like the idea, okay, we got a great proposal that's fixed for five years, and the cap for the remaining balance of the loan is extremely low, so I can live with that. So it kind of depends on the analysis and what the bank actually comes back with.
So, I mean, obviously, this is an opportunity to save money. My two concerns are, my two big concerns regarding a bank loan, number one would be, for some period of time, there would be a variable rate, which you just discussed, and the second one would be the call provision language. That's a concern, that could be problematic also down the road.
Yep. So we basically say, the district's preference is prepayable at any time with no penalty in whole or in part. no penalty, in whole or in part. Some will honor that, because that's what their banks can do. Others will say, eh, we can't do that. We might have a five-year prepayment provision, which means you can't refinance for five years. Or it may be, there's a one percent premium if you refinance in the first three years. So that's something that, those are, those are some of those kind of qualitative features that we're going to have to analyze as well and come back. Now, sometimes, some say-
The, the, the bank loan is non-callable, meaning you can never refinance it. Well, I think at that point, we throw that right out.
Okay.
It's sort of similar to bond issues. Just like bond issues, some bond issues have, are non-callable, some have ten-year call features, or some have five-year call features. We always prefer to have the shortest call feature to give you the most flexibility. So that's all going to be part of the analysis.
All right. So right now, there's a lot of, I guess, organizations wanting to refinance at a lower rate.
That's right.
So would it be that the banks are in the driver's seat, so to speak, at this point, so that their conditions would put them at a point, at a position where they're not incurring a lot of risk, and, and we would be, more so than any other times?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point, great question. They're in the driver's seat to a certain extent, but they know, especially the banks, I mean, we, we do a lot of transactions in, in the state, more than any other firm. And so the banks know that if there's owner's provisions in there, they're going to be thrown out. So, and some just have to, because that's what their credit committees say, you got to do that. But a lot of them understand that if it's two owners, you're not going to want to do it. So there's, there's a balance with that. So that's, our, our, our goal here is to take advantage of the interest rate market, reduce your debt service cost, but not increase any risks to the school district. So it's, it's that balance of what's the rate, and are there any kind of goofy provisions in there that we just don't feel are worthwhile for the district? Now, if that's the case, we, we throw them out of the mix.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Scott, could you just clarify for the board and those that are watching on television, in terms of an advanced refunding, and what happens, what would the bondholder get in terms of notice, and when would that happen, and what would happen thereafter?
Yes.
So they believe back in two thousand eighteen, they were purchasing, you know, a, a call date of two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah. So those bondholders are really going to be not affected for the next couple of years. They're going to continue to have their investment. So basically, what's going to happen the day of closing, you're going to close on, let's just use an example of, say, a ten million dollar loan. Most of that money is going to go in an escrow. That's going to be held by a bank, that money's going to be in there, securities are going to be bought, we're going to buy securities, we're going to bid those securities out, to basically continue to pay those bondholders every six months until the call date of those bonds. So they're going to continue to get, they're going to continue to get their, their, their coupons every six months. But now, instead of their debt basically being backed by the general obligation pledge, or the taxing pledge of the school district, now it's going to be pledged with the taxing power of the federal government. Because we're going to be buying US treasuries, or T-bills, or some other form of, of debt like that. So that, that debt, the eighteen bonds and nineteen bonds, will be considered de-feased for your purposes, that you're no longer responsible for that debt service, you're going to be responsible for the new two thousand twenty note or bond. And so, yeah, they're not going to really get notification of that until much closer to the call date. But life is going to be kind of normal for them until, until the call date, and then those bonds are going to be redeemed.
So Scott, I guess to, to summarize, it really boils down to locking in a potential savings now, or waiting four years to see if the savings could be greater?
Yeah.
That's what it boils down to. So it's almost like if you own a stock, and you have a hundred dollar profit in the stock, do you lock it in today, or do you wait for four years to hope that it's higher in four years? That's a philosophical question.
Definitely is the first decision. And then the second decision is, do we go with the idea of a bank loan, or do we go with taxable bond issuance?
And that's something we can discuss next, next week, is-
Once we see the proposals.
Here's what they look like, and here are the pros and cons, and here would be our recommendation.
I'm very much in favor of giving guidance to move forward and exploring the options. At this point, it sounds like it's low risk to, certainly to go forward. There's a, do we have to vote for a motion to that?
We'd like to have this move forward then to the March nineteenth meeting, and then we'll have more information next Thursday night at that meeting.
Thinking a motion? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is moved.
Yes. Thank you for that. Just one follow-up, I'm just, I don't want to catch anyone off-guard. So we will notify your, your bond council tomorrow that this is happening. So there will be an advertisement put in the paper next week. And so just so there's no surprises, just like other parameters, resolutions that we've done in the past, so let's just say, both of the bond issues that we're looking to refinance are ten million dollars apiece. So that totals twenty million dollars. You may see an advert, the advertisement in the paper may say something a little bit bigger than that. It may say twenty-one million, it may say twenty-two million, but I don't want anyone to think we're slipping anything in and borrowing new money or anything like that. It's just for debt act purposes, for state purposes, it's going to say the school district will be considering a resolution to refund the eighteen bonds, nineteen bonds, for a maximum amount not to exceed, say, twenty-two million dollars. So that will be in the paper, just in case you get any questions from any taxpayers, just as a heads up to you.
Can you, before you go, clarification on something, because although I am the chairman of this committee, I'm a special ed teacher in my normal life. I'm just trying to understand something very basic you tried to explain early on. So the tax-exempt bonds, they used to allow, we used to be able to do this for a tax-exempt bond, and we no longer are.
Correct.
And that changed with the most recent tax law that was passed.
At the end of seventeen.
In the end of seventeen. And so had we been able to do that, that way, we actually would have the potential to save more right now as a district. Is that's correct?
Potentially, but what's going on right now, the taxable rates are so low, they're basically is almost the same as the tax-exempt rates. Typically, typically, in very round numbers, very round numbers, say, if, if a tax-exempt rate is four percent, you can go borrow four percent, the taxable rate might be five percent, or, or more. But right now, they're both, because of how low rates are right now, they're both extremely close.
But in a more typical scenario, basically, that law made it harder for districts to save more money on bond reissuance.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
Do you have any idea why they might have done that? Like, as an expert in the field?
Well, everybody in this industry was opposed to, to that provision, because obviously, it really handcuffed our clients, schools, and cities, and states around the nation. Mayors, and you name it, all the different associations lobbied against the concept. It was basically a way, I think, for the federal government to save some money. Less tax-exempt debt out on the market, it actually brings in a little bit more revenue for the federal government. Kind of, it, it, it's, it's harder, it's much harder for you, it's better for the federal government that way.
Too bad we're not an oil company, I guess, huh?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So we also, on the topic of low interest rates, we thought this might be a good opportunity, since Scott is already here, to spend a couple of minutes. I know time is of the essence right now, Scott, to go through-
Yes.
...a presentation talking about a cash-settled hedge. This is an opportunity that we might want to consider for future borrowing. It's a concept that can basically, for all intents and purposes, lock in today's interest rate by engaging in a hedge. So we did have that presentation a year ago. We thought it would be a good time for a refresher, and then Scott and his team can come back and present in more detail at a subsequent meeting. But if we could just take a couple of minutes, we do have a, a slide deck for this as well. So Scott, maybe hit two or three slides, the highlights?
Yep. Why don't we go to page two, real briefly. So again, this is part of a tool to take advantage, a financing tool to take advantage of low rates. And so this is called a forward-starting hedge. And it, it does make some sense, and there's some applicability for you to consider this, because you potentially have some larger borrowings down the road if the projects do come to fruition. Our job is to just educate you to see if you want to move forward with it or not. And so that's, basically, there's some credit criterias for, that we think are kind of suitability tests for our clients to consider these. Is it a large, potentially a large project down the road? Yes. Is it a very high credit-worthy issuer, like the school district? Absolutely, yes. You know, is the fin, are the finances managed very well, so on and so forth? Yes. So you, at least in our eyes, meet the suitability test to, to consider. You may ultimately not like the risks or anything else, and that's perfectly fine, but you kind of first have to get over that, that, that first hurdle. And so if you kind of just look at a couple of these key points on number two, you know, maybe there's some future financings over the year, over the next bunch of years, for over a hundred million dollars. We would not necessarily be saying, do this for all of the potential future debt down the road. Maybe you do it for twenty-five percent, maybe you do it for fifty percent, whatever that magic number is. But again, that's for later down the road, but you don't have to hedge all of the potential debt that you may be issuing in, in the future. There's kind of, if you go to the second to bottom bull point, there's, there's interest rate risk in not doing anything at all, right? We are at all-time lows in the market right now, which is why, when we're talking with your business office and your administration, hey, let's, let's keep thinking about this idea, because rates are so low right now. And from an affordability standpoint, kind of running all the debt service impacts into models, obviously, it's much better for the taxpayers if you're able to borrow money at lower rates. And so there is risk to not doing anything now, and just kind of rolling the dice, if you will, and waiting four years, five years, eight years, nine years, ten years, till you actually borrow the money. And that's why we don't like to put all our eggs in one basket. And for most of our clients, they choose to maybe only hedge thirty percent or fifty percent of what they think they may need in the future. So that's just kind of some big-picture concepts. If you go to, why don't we go to page four, real briefly? And Steve, if you want us to hit any other pages, just stop me to back up or move forward quicker. But the, the key point on page four, the very top one, it allows issuers, school districts like yourself, to hedge against rising interest rates for future bond issues. And so typically, the very good time to do this is when rates are very low. Now, rates could go lower. There's still a little bit of room, not a lot of room, but a little bit of room to go lower. And if rates do go lower, by the time these swaps will be executed, three or four years down the road, there would be some cost incurred, and we'll get to that shortly. But, you know, again, where we are right now, it is a good time to be considering it. The one thing that I do really want to point out in the middle of this page is two main differences in this structure of a hedge or swap compared to some of the ones that were done back, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years or so ago. And we had a lot of experience in those. This one is very different. This one is what I call a short-term swap, or a short-term hedge, where the district's really only going to be in it for three or four, five years, depending on how long we want to wait till we actually close on it, when you need the money. For some of the things that went terribly wrong for some, some school districts around the, around the state and outside the state, they were twenty, thirty, thirty-five-year-type transactions. There was underlying variable rate bonds associated with these hedges. Here, there's none of that. This is a very short transaction. You're still going to issue traditional fixed-rate debt, whether it's a bond issue or a bank loan, when we get to that point. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there a while, that this, this is very different than some of the stories maybe you heard from two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Do the dates for, are the projects certain milestones in the project? Do we have to be more clear and specific about them for this to actually be more effective? Mr. Skraki?
Scott, why don't you talk about, I mean, you have to have an identifiable project if you're going to engage in a transaction like this.
And so-
With an expected-
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, with an expected actual borrowing date-
Okay.
And draw schedules for a project. This would not be done in absence of a defined project.
Okay, so they would have to, so, and again, identifiable would have its own definition, like, there would have to be, it would have to be awarded, or, I'm asking, I'm not sure.
Well, we could, we, we could move forward with the resolution, kind of what I call the hedge resolution, say, this year. Again, we're not trying to rush this, but we could do this over the next, say, six months, go forward with this. In that resolution, there'd be a bond resolution and swap resolution. The bond resolution would say that the district is authorizing and incurring, not issuing the debt, because we don't want you to be paying for it, but authorizing and incurring it, some maximum amount, whatever that number is, a hundred million, two hundred million, let's not get wet to that. And it could be used for various projects, including ninth-grade school, or high school, whatever the different projects are, they, they need to be named in there. But we're actually, and, and I think at this point, there's probably some reasonable estimates. They're not fine-tuned, but there are reasonable estimates that the school district is contemplating issuing, or at least looking at, at, at some projects in the future. You've probably heard us talk over the years that when you go to borrow tax-exempt debt, you need to have reasonable expectation that you're going to spend that money, say, in a three-year period of time. Well, that three-year period of time does not start until you close on the transaction, or until we settle on it. So that's where, that's when you really need to have more refined numbers and, and expectations you're going to spend the money. So the goal here would be to not have these hedges become effective, say, until two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four, when these projects kind of get up and running.
So what if you miss, so what if you miss that date? Are there penalties to be incurred, then, that the bank would cause us-
You could move the start date. And we've done this for some of our other townships and school districts and stuff around the state that have been doing these kind of things. Because things don't always go as planned, right? Sometimes projects get delayed, or whatever the case may be. So you could, say you had a, you did one of these, and you said, we, we want to start it in January of two thousand twenty-three, because you think by then, things are going to be well in process with some amount of your overall capital plan. We get to that point, and nothing has started. You've kind of started all over, no shovels are ready to hit the ground. We could come back and say, okay, we can extend the start date, another six months, another year, whatever it may be, that it does not become effective. And depending on where the market is at that point in time, it may cost next to nothing to move that rate. So maybe the rate moves one or two basis points, maybe it moves ten or fifteen basis points. It really just depends on different relations. So there could be an adjustment to that, to that hedge rate, if you will, by moving it. But you have that, you have that option. The other option you have is, and if you go to page six, the other option you have is, if you put it on today, if you, if you go through and do, kind of approve all the paperwork here this year, but it's not going to start for a couple of years, let's just, and we're not necessarily big advocates of this, but let's just say that rates go a lot higher during that interim time period. You have the ability, so if, what that says up top there, if rates are higher than the swap rate at some point in time, you could actually receive money to terminate that. So let's just say you, you, you do this now, you expect to settle it in two thousand twenty-three, but all of a sudden, next year, rates skyrocket. We may call up Steve and say, hey, that swap has a positive value right now of two million dollars, just making up numbers. You don't have to do anything. You can just keep it as a hedge, like, you know, you've been planning for it. Or you could say, eh, let's just terminate it now, and be done with it, collect our money, and maybe we'll reevaluate, and maybe do another one. You have that option to terminate before the start date even happens. Or, you know, I may call Steve up a year from now and say, hey, just as an FYI, rates even went down further, and now that swap is actually out of the money by two million dollars. Well, again, you don't plan on doing anything with it, it's just kind of a paper loss, if you will, because the whole point of it is to hedge that debt you're going to issue in two thousand twenty-three, or whenever that is. So there is flexibility, you can terminate it if you want. Some of our clients did that, and it worked out very well for them, that they were able to receive a big chunk of change. Others kept it as a true hedge, and said, we're, we're just going to kind of let it ride until we get to that start date three or four years from now. And so that's, it gives you that, those options. But I think the one key thing, I just want, I know you, you got to go to your next meeting, or start your next meeting. But I think one important slide is-
Page eleven?
Yes. My fingers aren't working. Slide eleven. So again, lots of stuff on this page, but if you kind of gravitate towards the yellow box up in the top right-hand corner of that, this is basically just an illustration of, if you lock in a swap now, and these are not, these rates are not indicative of your debt, or your credit profile, or even the market as of today. But in, in the middle of that yellow box, it basically says, you know, a zero percent, meaning if rates do not change, when the swap is actually executed in two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three, in this example, the rate is going to be a four seventy-five, the all-in rate. When you kind of factor in everything that's moving, the rate's going to be a four seventy-five. If rates actually drop one full percent, so if you just go to the left, one column, it's column four there, if rates drop one full percent from when, the time you put the transaction on, say, this year, to when you go to execute it, the school district's going to have to make a payment, that's with that negative, basically, ten million dollars. You're going to have to make a payment of ten million dollars, but rates are going to be much lower then. So your cost of your debt is going to be much lower. So even though you're going to make a big payment, your, your all-in cost, or your true interest cost, is a four eighty-five. So it's pretty close to what it was if the market was absolutely, you know, didn't change at all, at a four seventy-five. Kind of on the opposite side, if you go to the right, to column six, if when we get to that point in time that you're ready to terminate the swap and issue new bonds, and rates are one percent higher, you're going to receive a check for, say, six million dollars, five point nine million is showing. But now you're going to be issuing debt at a higher rate, because rates are higher, but your cost is, all-in cost is still a four sixty-five. So that's the point of this, is we're not really, we're trying to take advantage of today's low rates, but we're not saying, we're not betting that rates are going to be higher, or rates are going to be lower. It's basically, no matter where rates are, if they're higher or lower, your all-in cost of funds are going to be about the same. Now, again, there's other, there's some other nuances in there that we definitely want to spend more time getting in the weeds. This is clearly at the thirty-thousand-foot level tonight. But if you did want to hear more about this, we're happy to tell you more, go more in the details. But, you know, again, in talking with your administration, and your, all the planning that we're doing, we just want to kind of bring this back to the table again, for just kind of the wheels to start turning, that, again, if you do want to hear more, we're, we're happy to provide a lot more detail, and make things a little bit more relevant. happy to provide a lot more detail and make things a little bit more relevant for the North Penn set of circumstances. But, you know, that's, this is more just to kind of get our feet wet again this evening. So maybe with that, I'll stop, and Steve, any other point, any other pages you want me to hit?
One thing I like about that chart with the swap, you can see the total debt service, the spread between the low point and the high point in that illustration is, is only about $5 million, the spread between the two. On the left-hand side, without the swap, the low to high point, that spread is about $21 million. So basically, again, it's, it's almost, I kind of simplified and say, it's almost like an insurance policy to take advantage, if you're comfortable with today's rates, it's pretty much locking in today's rates, is what it does. Whether you actually, rates go lower, you borrow at a lower cost, you have to make a cash payment, but you're borrowing at a lower cost. If rates go higher, you get a cash payment, but you're borrowing at a higher cost. But it pretty much gets you back to the same point you are with today's rates. I think that's the beauty of it. And because we are at historic lows right now, they can go lower, we can be in negative interest rate territory. But we've never experienced rates, as was shown on that slide, ever before. 100% of the time, rates have been higher than where they are right now. So this is probably an excellent opportunity to have further conversation, to try to take advantage of the low-interest rate environment that we're in. So we'll have, we'll have more information on this at a future meeting. No action needs to be taken on this tonight. We'll have Scott and his team back at a subsequent meeting, because we'd like to take maybe a deeper dive into this, maybe spend a half hour, 45 minutes, and to gauge the board's interest in pursuing this further.
Thank you. And no offense, Scott, but I liked Steve's explanation a lot better.
I did too.
I understood what he was saying. No, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
You bet, thank you.
Appreciate it, Garrett, thank you. So considering the time, our work session is supposed to start now. We do have two additional items, though, we'd like to move to the March 19th action meeting, if we could cover those, please? And we can save the informational items for a subsequent meeting. We do have budget transfers for February totaling $444,630.43, that we'd like to move forward to the March 19th action meeting.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Ramich, seconded by Mr. McBane. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, next item, we have the sale of obsolete buses. With the purchase, we have an order out right now for an additional seven propane buses. That means we'd like to trade in seven buses of our older buses that really aren't being used now. We did receive three proposals, and the highest proposal was $1,000 per bus. By selling the buses, it would reduce our, the average age of our fleet from 11.41 years to 10.35 years. And these buses are primarily 2004 vintage 16-year-old buses with nearly 200,000 miles on each bus.
Thoughts or comments? Anybody want to put in a claim for one, like a chance?
Mr. Patchell, do I hear 2,000?
Mr. Patchell, you want to, yeah.
No, it's a shame to sell them because you could use them for homeless shelters for those that lose their jobs in the next depression.
I think a bus would look better than the scooter, I don't know.
Yeah. It's true. He's correct.
But we'd like to move this forward for the sale to Brightbill, the highest bidder for sale of the seven buses.
Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Motion by Mrs. Stoll, seconded by Mr. Casa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And then finally, I just want to mention that we'll put this on the agenda then for the 19th also. We were going to discuss the 2020 PASBO policy priorities, in particular, one dealing with charter school reform. We do have some document under the executive content in board docs, if you could take a look at that, please, prior to the 19th. It has some useful background information, it does have a PSBA sample policy the board may want to consider adopting on the 19th. So we'll bring that same information back for discussion on the 19th as well.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. All right? No, we have to do public comment, second round.
Could I, could I ask real quickly? We have a student representative here, it'd be a shame to-
We do have a student representative here.
If we could take a moment for him, perhaps?
Okay, so coming into this year, the general consensus of student government association was that we don't affect the student body. So the five officers met, and we brainstormed a list of ideas of how, how we could change that. And one of those ideas was to introduce a new event called Wish Week. And in a nutshell, that's a raffle-type event. So for the small price of $2, a student can enter in, a student or staff member can enter in the event, and once they get a raffle ticket, they are given the opportunity to win a bunch of prizes. So some of the prizes that were available were AirPods, Sixers tickets, Hydro Flask, and other like North Penn-related items. And basically, we profited $50 from it, but we're more proud of the fact that we gave students from all types of social classes the equal opportunity to win various prizes. And also, we had our volleyball tournament a couple of weeks ago. We earned $600 from that, and we chose to donate 500 of those 600 to St. Jude's Children Hospital.
That's fantastic. Thank you. All right. All right, let's do the guidelines. This is second opportunity for public comment. We're going to ask for those of you, we are about to start the next meeting, you'll also have an opportunity, and this is relevant to-
I'm restricted.
Please do, yeah, thank you.
I do have something, yeah. I was mentioning to somebody, I said, this is a well-known book, Capitalism, Milton Friedman, sold many copies, Sham Thinking. And I said, I'll read you from it, okay? It is widely urged that the great need in schooling is more money to build more facilities and to pay higher salaries to teachers in order to attract better teachers. You will have a problem in the future, trust me. It's, see, this seems a false diagnosis. The amount of money spent on schooling has been rising at an extraordinarily high rate, far, far faster than total income. The public is really starting to get concerned about this. You know this is a liftoff, we're just off launch right now, and three, 2.6, 2.3, 2.4, 3.2? Look, it looks like a launch with NASA. The people in Lansdale that don't make the money that you people make, except for the student over there, is troubling. It is troubling. And you must be cognizant of the pressure that you're putting on rents. And to give a rent rebate, I understand it's one of the few districts, but it's almost like pocket lint. Stop it, stop it, it's stupid. Okay. The problem is not primarily that we're spending too little money, though we may be getting so little for our dollars spent. Perhaps the amounts of money spent on magnificent structures, luxurious grounds at many schools are properly classified as expenditures on schooling. It is hard to accept them equally as expenditures on education. I'm telling you, this borrowing money is a game. And I said, anybody that has our house, I got eight years to go on my mortgage. And they keep constantly, ah, we could refinance it for this, you could this, get a Mercedes. I said, sustainability is total debt relief by not having any. You need to reduce your borrowing. Stop all this silly games. What's going to happen is, oh, yeah, mortgages.